So I'd like to call the City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting to order. It is 2:00 P. M. on May 28th. We're in Ocean Shores Library. Do a roll call here. Commissioner Warren here. Commissioner Barr is absent. Commissioner Bees?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry here. Commissioner Wallace here. I'd like a motion to excuse Commissioner Barr from the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
I'd like a motion to approve our meeting agenda today. I'll make that motion.
Motion, second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
For approval of minutes? Do we have any changes or do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 14, 2024 Planning Commission meeting?
I make a motion.
Motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
I'll second it even though I know the. Right, fall in favor, all kind?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public comments, any public comments in the room? Yes.
Okay, I wanted to address the membrane structure because it was brought out by the commission before. So I wrote myself some notes, someone's gonna read them to you.
Yeah.
Mayor Dinger, an executive order during the pandemic that would allow businesses to put up a temporary tent so business would not lose seating capacity with a six-foot rule for table spacing. Mayor Martin, after the pandemic, would overgave the planning commission task of looking into, should ocean shore board structure be allowed to remain? The planning commission considers, does the structure meet the vision of the COF plan and the current vision of the planning commission motion? Does the structure give complete competitive advantage over brick-and-order businesses because the cost factor of tent, like structural, was six-foot? Is it, if it is allowed to stay, could other businesses do the same? We, now we could have tent-like structures in other parts of commercial zone. Does it mean building code? Does it mean fire code? Does it have heat? What's the heating during cold weather? If it is allowed to stay, it doesn't have any parking spaces for the new capacity. The planning commission was aware of the wind and snow capacity of the structure. It came down on the vision of ocean shores. Five and seven planning commissioners, which are discussed the issue, worked on the COF plan. Two planning commissioners voted on this issue on the council. The recommendation for the planning mission was not to allow ocean shore force tent-like structure to remain, but with seven no's, zero yeses. The tent of the executive order was help businesses during the pandemic not to increase business and then consume. The fight you, the fight commission must itself, what is our vision of?
Good, glad you copied that, Dan. Any other comments in this? Any comments from afar? Yes, Peter.
Hi, Mark. Hello, everybody. First, I want to say that there is a distinction between a tent and a membrane structure. And also, the code allows membrane structures. And I've already given previous comments on this. It's already part of the record if anybody wants to review that. So the distinction has to do with the time that the structure is erected. Anything less than six months, 180 days is considered governed by the fire code. Anything longer than 180 days is governed by section, I believe it's 32, in the International Building Code. So I, I think it's important that everybody continues those distinctions because we're not talking about the same thing. And I'll leave that, leave my comments there for now. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Any other comments from afar?
No.
Okay, under old business, there was Don Williams had sent an email about mobile food vendors omitted from business zone. And I sent that out to all the members. And although they are allowed in the zones, Mr. Williams, he seems to think that there is omission from the code that would be beneficial. So I, I did do for this discussion, out of the code, that it does make a distinction between private property and public property will only operate in the B1, B2, B3 resort tour commercial zones. And the city would approve either, either one. The private, you'd have to get written permission from whoever owns that private property. I don't know. That's why I put it on here to have a discussion as to if anyone had any points they'd like to make on the mobile food vendors. And if you feel that with the code, the way it's written, it says B1, B2, B3, is that being omitted from the business zone? Any thoughts?
Yeah, I have a few thoughts on it. And I wish Mr. Williams was present today to maybe elaborate a little further on his thoughts. But reading Code 17.56, it explicitly says that the mobile food units may operate on private property in the B1 zone, B2 zone, B3 zones. Which, to me, I mean, if you're, anybody's gonna be a mobile food vendor, the first thing they're gonna go to is 17.56. So I kind of, I initially have the feeling that what Mr. Williams is asking for may be redundant in that it's already allowed in these zones for 17.56. I'm not entirely sure what his concern is. And I would really, I mean, I'd really be willing to listen to what it is because it's, I mean, I, to me, it's pretty clear, reading the code. Not to say that I, I don't have any, I, I have a big objection if it really belongs, if there's a reason it belongs in the, in the B1, B2, and B3 under permitted, permitted uses. The one thing I'm thinking about, though, as far as maybe in the future here, if we, if it's left as is, if for any reason the city council decides to revoke Code 17.56, if it's left like it is, then we would not have to make changes to the B1, B2, and B3. Whereas if we make changes to B1, B2, and B3, and for some reason, a couple of, maybe this, something's not working out with the mobile food vendors. And all they would have to do is revoke 17.56, and we would not have to change the code. I do have, in reading 17.56, I really wasn't up to speed when this, the mobile home, mobile food vendors were being approved by the city and what the process was. But some things that strike me in 17.56 is, even though one of the, oh, which one is it? Seventeen, 17.56.110 says business activity to be temporary. But if you read that section, it only pertains to public right-of-way. It doesn't pertain to anything on private lots. It just gives basically an hour of operations and that the mobile, mobile food unit cannot be left unattended. But it does say anything about private. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see any limitations on time for mobile food units to be on a property. Well, the only restriction I see is, is the license that's renewed yearly. So basically, a, a mobile food unit can show up on a lot and be there. If their license keeps getting renewed, it can be there forever. It's a quote, permanent business, as I would call it. So it takes away, I think, this term temporary. I, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't, I, you know, I, I don't see it, I don't see that. I, I see very lot of vagueness in that statement here in 17.56. And with that being the case, with that being not really well-defined, or maybe it is defined, maybe it is intended, there is no limit. You know, if we, if it's, yeah, I'll put, allowed as a use and be in the actual zoning. Is, is it saying now that if I have a, they can be one lot, and I put a mobile food unit on it, and it's beyond there, I can have it on there forever?
Well, I, I think that's, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it up so we can just discuss his concern. But I, I'm looking at it thinking they're already approved in these areas with the distinction being if it's on private property, you need permission from the private property owner. And if it's public, the city will decide. In any case, you still need to have the business license through the city to, and, and, and the use. So any other thoughts, or you're, you're contemplating?
I was kind of surprised, like, they don't include it all. See, like, part of a municipal, like, registration issue, then a zoning issue.
Yeah.
I agree with him. What if, what if there's a change we made that doesn't have to go through our public hearing, then out of the council and that?
Yeah, if there would be changes, I would imagine to go through them.
The specificity described here, like, operating averages.
One of the other things that was brought to my attention is, it talks about B1, B2, and B3. Well, what happens if you have an R1? And you want to have a private property or a private property? And you want to bring one in on your, on your lot? That's not in B1, B2, or B3? Would that be a problem? Or not private property, but it's not contained within B1, B2, and B3? It would be an R1 in this, in this hypothetical case.
Yeah, I have thought on that code too. So if it's at my residence, in a residential zone for private property, and I am paying for the food truck and the food as part of my party, is it really considered a mobile food vendor or is it considered catered?
Well, good point, but.
But on the same token, if that food truck is at my property and my guests are buying their food from the mobile food vendor, now is it a mobile food vendor now instead of a caterer? In that case, then technically, per this, it's not, that's not permitted.
No, not.
So that's, that's kind of why I brought it up. In my investigation, when I asked questions, I was told food, mobile food vendors can operate in ocean shore. Great. And, and, and that's good. But are there some limitations? That's why I wanted to just bring it up for discussion. Because I, I don't really shy away from any topic. It's not in my major. So is it, is it, is it worded properly? Does it cover the possibilities? I don't know.
And, and going back to the, at, at your home. So what if, what if the mobile food unit is parked in the street in front of your house? It actually is now on public property. Okay, so now, although it does say in, in the, in here that the mobile food units on public property shall operate only in B1, B2, or B3 zones. So, okay, location of the food unit within any public right-of-way or any public property other than the site approved by the city is prohibited.
Right.
Okay, so they can't operate in the street. Unless, unless you, you're arrested, you go to, I'm gonna have a food truck for the day if the city approves, okay? So that kind of takes care of that. But still, it's, yeah, it's, I, I find the set, a lot of the, section 17.56, I think it's lacking a lot of, it, 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 there's a lot of vagueness in it, I think. But in order for me to feel comfortable to say, okay, let's add it to the B1, B2, and B3 zones as Mr. Williams suggests, I think there needs to be some more things worked out in 17.56 for more, for me to feel comfortable.
Yeah, so according to my research, they're already allowed there.
Yes, yeah, so it's redundant.
Right, so we, we don't need to make any changes to allow them there today. The question became, well, what if I want to have somewhere else? It's not in the B1, B2, B3. Should we engage in that discussion yet? Or just say, we're, we've already got food trucks in ocean shores as is, and let it go ahead?
Yeah, at what point, place of the residential, where does it become the difference between a mobile food unit and a caterer?
Right. And I don't know, my frankly, if I was in an R1 and I wanted to have a food truck, whether, when I approached the city for that permit, whether it would be approved or not? Because it's not in the B1, B2 needed. So it may not even be approved. I don't.
I'm paying for all the food for my guests, I'm anticipating caterer.
Right. But I don't know how, I don't know, sitting here today, how the city would respond to that request. So I just wanted to bring it up. Because personally, right now, for what's worth, I think we're good in the B1, B2, B3 in areas that are food trucks. So I think we're good there.
I, I think there's no question about that, based on the language reading.
Uh, any other thoughts?
Maybe we should solve a problem that actually exists.
Okay.
Rather than anticipate when and from what we want.
Agreed. And, and, and now, maybe his thoughts are since we, we are talking about re, you know, revise, you know, updating the codes, maybe he just thinks that it belongs there, we're updating it. But I, I, I still think it's, it's.
Yeah, he did say that if we revise the codes to include it with his recommendations. Any other comments on that?
I got one. I only, I got a concern of taking a residential neighborhood and turning it into a business by putting a food truck on there where you do more than just having a gathering for your family and friends, where it becomes a business and it's not zoned for business.
Right, right. You'd have to get a permit. And I think for a one-off, perhaps, I don't know what the city would say, but I, I agree with you, Tom, that if you get it, try to do it on a permanent basis, that would not be, that would not be approved based on what I read in the code today.
Okay.
Um, the next item I'd like to talk about is something that was done before at the planning commission and went forward, but has not been acted upon. And that's on page five of the agenda. The 40% residential rule. And I just kind of wanted just to bring it back up. I think it's already been decided. And I'll just read it for the public record. On December 13, 2022, Dan, you'll remember this. The Ocean Shore Planning Commission met and unanimously voted to recommend that the Ocean Shores Municipal Building be changed to specify that the 40% restriction on building area be applied to residential lots only. A 17.50.210M of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code was recently changed to link buildings to covering 40% or less of a lot area. No differentiation was made between residential and business districts. Lot areas used to calculate allowable building coverage was the entire lot, regardless of setback. The planning commission was clear in their original intent that the 40% restrictions have only applied to residential lots and not be applied to business and commercial lots. Section 17.50.210M of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code currently reads, no building or combination of buildings permitted or otherwise exceed 40% of the lot as specified for this section. Proposed revised language for this would be, no building or combination of buildings permitted or otherwise in a residential zone shall exceed 40% of a lot area as specified in this section. The emphasis of in a residential zone has been added. The planning commission felt this clarification was required to remove any possible misinterpretation that the 40% lot coverage restriction could be applied to business and commercial lots. Any further thoughts, Marshall, please?
Just a little clarification on that. So I had a discussion with one of the previous planning commissioners regarding the application of 175210 in its entirety. And those, those, it didn't get defined that when, when the ordinance was written, but the intent was, and maybe Dan can chime in if he remembers different, but those were to be the residential design standards, not the commercial design standards. And so the things that are applied or outlined in 175210, like exposed metal fasteners on roofs and stuff like that, we don't apply that rule to the business zones. And so that's why you'll see whole buildings in the business districts with exposed metal fasteners and stuff like that, whereas you will not see that in the residential zones. Is that a fair summary?
Absolutely. So the reason I wanted to bring this up, it had been forwarded to the city government for clarification, and it had not been acted on. Is it something that we believe that they need to resubmit for that clarification to be put in there? That it is a residential zone, not a commercial zone?
Yes.
Okay. There he is. Marshall?
So in, in some of the research documents and, and the working documents of the planning commission, there is specific reference to 175210 not just being architectural features, but residential architectural features. And I don't know why that didn't make it into the title of this code. That would have eliminated this as an issue had that title been carried over from our working documents into, into the final code. So I don't know if that's a, a revision that, you know, would simplify itself by, by doing that, or there's a benefit in doing that. That's how I've applied it as, as the, as the planner.
Even though it's not in there currently, that's not.
It's not specific. And, and this is where it might make sense to, to codify that. Is I happened to be there when the discussions were happening and this body entertained the revisions to the architectural features. And, and I was able to go back and, and confer with one of the commissioners because I thought that was the case, and he actually provided some documents or pointed me towards some documents that identified those as residential architectural features, not architectural features in general. So with that clarification, I have not been applying the architectural features to the business districts of Ocean Shores.
Gotcha. Okay, I just wanted to bring it.
I think I'll be playing speaking if it's somewhere else when Marshall's going on to the Russian mafia. Yeah, I think that his memory will, will loss the commission then.
Okay. So then, I will, since it was December 13, 2022, when it was decided, I mean, I wasn't in the, a member of this body at that time. I will go ahead and submit that to see if we can't get that change put in there to help codify it. Any, any problems with that?
No.
Yeah. It's not, I'm looking, I'm not looking for a vote on that because it's already been voted upon.
Yeah, I, I hesitated to ask the mayor or, or this body to revisit this because the code is so fresh. And, but it does make sense to further clarify that, that this entire section of code only applies to the residential zone parts of Ocean Shores and not to the business district.
So I will retransmit that to the mayor based on our discussion. Okay. There was an item on the agenda, minimum square footage, that did not make it into the agenda pack. And again, this is an old situation. And what we're trying to do here is, on May 9, 2023, after several meetings, where minimum square footage for residential construction were discussed by the planning commission, the commission unanimously voted to change, to get rid of the chart that is currently in there, to change section 17.50.210D of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code to make the minimum floor space in all single-family residential zones 650 square feet instead of the current values in the table depending on zones. So again, any thoughts on that before I resend that to the mayor for consideration? It will eliminate the chart that is currently in there and just make it 650 square feet.
Could it just not make it onto the council agenda or how does?
It has not made it. Now, I had a meeting with the mayor. And he, I said, I, just like with the 40% before, he received them, but nothing happened. So with this one as well, I just wanted to come back here before I send it back to him. With the 600, it didn't make the agenda. So there's been no action there on, on these two items.
They're right there with the mixed of budgeting or something.
Yeah, and I don't know the reason why. I just know that they weren't. So I just let him know that I would be bringing them back to your attention, and then I would resubmit them if we were in agreeance to do so. And like I've said, this was from '23, the first one was '22. This one is '23, so I will resubmit that back. More action in changing the minimum square footage from what is currently in the chart to just say 650 square feet is the, the minimum. The next item on the agenda is membrane structures. And Commissioner Barr was, she volunteered to do an initial review of membrane structures. It was something that I was asked to have a discussion from this body about. And I would read her response that she would if she was here. Unfortunately, she can't be here today. The City of Ocean Shores has adopted the International Business Code as the standard for constructing and regulating constructed structures. Additionally, the International Building Code, Chapter 51-50 of the WAC, is adopted by the Washington State Building Code Council pursuant to Chapters 19.27 and 70.92 RCW. These codes were first adopted by reference to the Washington State Legislature in 1974. These codes were first adopted by reference to the Washington State Legislature in nineteen seventy-four. And it's incorporated into the Washington State Building Code. The State Building Code Act requires that each local jurisdiction enforce the State Building Code within its jurisdiction. Now, local amendments, any jurisdiction may amend the State Building Code, provided the amendments do not reduce the minimum performance standard of the code. There are certain areas of the code where amendments are prohibited and have to do with energy codes, ventilation, and accessibility standards. With regard to membrane structures, these are addressed in Chapter thirty-one, Special Construction, Section thirty-one oh two, Membrane Structures in the twenty twenty-one Washington State Building Code, version August twenty twenty-three. The type of construction that these structures are categorized are one-one B. It is also broken down into usage periods of less than a hundred and eighty days and greater than a hundred and eighty days. The basic premise being these structures with usage greater than one hundred and eighty days must meet the I B C, International Building Code, and must be non-combustible set for a seven oh three point three of the Washington State Building Code. Or meet the fire propagation performance criteria of test method one or test method two is appropriate under N A F P A seven zero one. In researching, there is no black and white clear statement in the code that says if your membrane structure is for non-industrial or commercial use and will have human occupancy as an indoor dining, indoor dining or entertainment, it is not allowed other than on a temporary basis for a hundred and eighty days or less. That said, I believe it is the non-combustible requirement that will not make these structures permanent. Also, on a side note, in the code, it does not say that the only application of more permanent uses is for agriculture or nursery businesses where the public is not allowed. In the materials provided by the mayor that we, I sent to everyone, it's in the agenda material. There is an engineering report given by Weather Shelter Systems. I believe either the manufacturer or reseller of the ocean forest structure. And it reports that meets the twenty twelve I B C for wind and loads. However, this is outdated. Additionally, there is no fire rating provided. Things to consider. If these are allowed, is this, is this the look that we want in the city on a permanent basis? How would we limit the use? Conditional use? How would we determine fire safety ratings over the time as the structure ages? So that is the report by Commissioner Barr that she would have read. Any thoughts? Are these just, so we know that the data that was submitted uh is the current engineering drawings that Ocean Forest used. So hypothetically, if other places of business or whatever use those same drawings to the same codes, would they be allowed in Ocean Shores? Could they be allowed at Ocean Shores? And could they be permanent opposed to just up to a hundred and eighty days? Hence the discussion.
Well, first question I have is, um, the, the data that was sent to us, it does not say that is, you're talking about fire rating, that is non-combustible. So I, and that is the key right there. I mean, if it's, if, if, if it's not, uh, non-combustible, uh, it can't be allowed for over a hundred and eighty days. And that's period, that's not Ocean Shores, that's uh.
Just there.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's closed case, sir. So I guess the answer to that question would be, we would have to find, you know, to the question you present is, well, you know, if it meets that standard. If it doesn't meet that standard, then that's the best it can be is a temporary structure for up to a hundred and eighty. Which, in the case of Ocean Forest, it has exceeded that and has been granted extensions, if I understand it correct.
Marshall, any thoughts?
That, yeah, that's correct. And, and uh, you know, as you kind of outlined in the beginning, um, this was um basically an accommodation uh for a situation that occurred in our country that was well beyond the discussion that you guys are having today. It was, you know, to, to deal with the inability of businesses to, you know, seat people closer than six feet together. Um, we just, uh, we keep, we keep, you know, extending that uh concept of COVID.
Yes.
Um, until this body comes to a final recommendation to the council and the council acts. So, um, yeah, I think the building code as outlined is pretty clear.
And any other thoughts?
Just the only one?
Our only one structure like the check. It's the only one, but yeah.
The other, I, I guess the other thing that, that you guys may want to consider is right now, the limitation uh is thirty days with council approval for a tent structure in, in the, uh, in the B one and B two, and that's for public assembly. I think that was, uh, intended to cover things like revival tents and carnivals and those kind of things that would typically not last more than thirty days. But, um, so if you wanted to push the membrane structures out to the full hundred and eighty days allowed by state code or the building code, then there does have to be a revision of uh, the municipal code to allow for that hundred and eighty day as opposed to thirty days. I don't know if the code had a provision for uh extensions in there or not, but, uh, but they limit it to thirty days currently. So. And that's seventeen fifty oh twenty.
So.
This is an unusual circumstance to this.
Yes.
What we tend to hear is the visitor, much more permanent. And if, if the city at some point wants to do something like that, again, and maybe it's up to the executive order of the council to make those rule changes, but as far as we go, it seems almost like a rent seeking. Like, I don't see the point in memorializing this any longer than we normally would otherwise.
So there, what I'm hearing is there's, there's no thought process of making these type structures permanent in Ocean Shores. Regardless of design.
I mean, I hate to say it because I, I love sitting under that structure and have a beer, but uh, yeah, I'd hate to see it go away, but here, you know, but do I want them all over town too? Um, you know, you, you gotta do what for one, you gotta do for everybody else. And um, understand it was clarifying that and uh, you know, there's some, maybe it's time for them to consider a more permanent structure. You know, and it sounds like this was already decided according to uh the public comment. It sounds like this was already decided upon uh whenever you said that was, like it was, you know, last year or whatever. So it's, you know, it sounds like we're revisiting something that's already been determined.
Well, but the, but the thing is, I don't have a problem with this structure because of what Westport, a city allows over there. His is structurally more sound tenfold because it's anchored to a concrete base where theirs are just anchored with spikes into gravel and sand. And it's for the most part, they're up three hundred and sixty-five days a year until it gets way too windy. Then once or twice they take it down because I've been over and seen it and talked to them. I mean, if he, if he's got to update some of the codes in it, I don't have a problem with that because it withstand, it withstood some pretty hefty storms the last three years or four years. And some of it is a political, it, it's a political game that's gone on since COVID.
Well, in this structure, if I understand it correctly, reading through it, it uh has up to a hundred and thirty-five mile an hour wind requirement. Hopefully, we don't see that.
Yeah.
Here in Ocean Shores, but um, okay.
Uh, yes. Um, just to follow up on that a little bit, I can tell you that we did call the City of Westport to find out um how they managed to, uh, to get that structure through the building code. And admittedly, they have not.
Oh, okay. So.
Um, I think that's a perilous place for us to be to start ignoring, ignoring building codes, uh, if not given the authority by the code itself to do so.
Oh.
That's, that's my two cents.
And I agree. And I, I think, yeah, I think, you know, I don't think, I don't think we really should even be having this discussion unless we know that these structures do meet this non-combustible code. The, um, and apparently we don't know whether the structure over there, Ocean Forest does or not from the information we have.
I personally do not know that, the answer to that question.
If they, if they do meet that, then I think it's worth continuing this conversation. But if it doesn't meet that code, uh, this is off or not. I think because it's, it's quite clear that the International Building Code is only allowed, you know, you know, it has to be non-combustible if it's over a hundred and eighty days. And I, and are there membrane structures that are non-combustible that maybe could be permanent? But, you know, I guess if they don't exist, then it's, it doesn't matter.
And I, do you know that?
I, I don't. And my recommendation, um, if, if the conversation needs to go deeper or whatever, would be to invoke the professional, which is Roy Simmons, our building official,
Okay.
who can quote you pretty much Bible verse from the code, uh, the sections that would cover a membrane structure. Uh, it also has to do with the assembly type as well, you know, what, what, and where it can be located and brown. Whether you're putting people in it or whether you're storing hay bales in it, there's a difference.
There is a difference.
And so, um, we've also got a new energy code that is making it more difficult to do things like this. So, uh, he would be the, the professional that I would rely on to flesh this out if you guys uh need to take a deeper dive into this.
Well, I will certainly reach out to him and see, uh, what his thoughts are before going forward.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Um, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, a theme for Ocean Shores. And uh, Steve, you said you take that one on. And so, um, what I've been asked to do is come up with a theme of Ocean Shores. And the two cities that were mentioned during the discussion was Leavenworth, Bavarian City, and Long Beach, which might more closely uh reflect us in Ocean Shores. So what did you come up with?
Okay, so that being said, so the first thing I did was, okay, well, let's look at some towns that have a theme. Uh, and uh, find out, do some history on how they make it work. Um, and I started out with Leavenworth because that's, you know, that's one that sticks out the most. And that, with the barbarian thing, Bavarian thing. And um, so the history on that is, um, they, uh, in nineteen sixty-two, they were looking for, um, the, the town was looking for some, some, uh, oh, just economic stimulus because the, the, uh, I, I didn't write down exactly what they were known for before, but it was logging and such. And they wanted to be more, uh, promote tourism. So they started what they called Project Life, and life was Leavenworth Improvement for Everyone. And they started a committee. And it was actually formed with the partnership with the University of Washington uh to revitalize the town. But ended up, what ended up happening was that there were, uh, two Seattle businessmen, um, in nineteen sixty-five came up with the theme idea, idea for, um, an Alpine German, uh, town. And it was actually based on a Danish themed town in California called Solvang. And uh, so they, so they, uh, so it was actually started by the two business, two businessmen. And uh, and it kind of took off and the, now in the town uh enforced German, uh Alpine German architecture on all new businesses. Um, and uh, so it's, it's very, and there's a, it's a a big partnership between the city itself and their Chamber of Commerce, which all the, their website and most of the tourism information is promoted by the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and this, and they promote the Alpine theme with the mountains and four season recreation, whiskey and then in that, which, you know, obviously we don't have season recreation here, but uh, so based on that, I might pull, if it was based on this Danish themed town of Solvang, California, I'd look, look at Solvang. Uh, and Solvang was actually founded, uh, it's, it's a Danish community, the, the Danish, uh, group, Danish, uh, people founded a mission there in nineteen eleven. And they began Danish themed architecture in nineteen forty-seven. Uh, it is in the heart of wine country, okay, uh, in California. Uh, here again, they do have a very active Chamber of Commerce that promotes, uh, this. Um, so then I Googled, I just Googled, uh, uh, tourist towns with a theme. And I came up with a few, um, I came from Michigan, so there was a couple of big towns with that. Uh, there's a Bavarian themed town called Frankenmuth. Uh, here again, history of German settlers in the eighteen hundreds, uh, which they have the German there. And if you go through that town, it's pretty much like driving through Leavenworth except without the mountains. Uh, there's a town, Holland, Michigan, on Lake Michigan, and it was, uh, founded by the Dutch in eighteen hundreds. And uh, they have a theme park, actually it's a windmill village. That's, it's a Dutch themed, themed park. Um, so, and then there was, there's actually one in another town in, uh, Washington that I have not been to, but it's, uh, Winthrop. And it has the old west theme. So, uh, I tried to get a little history on that and, uh, here again, it was a lumbering town and that, and business kind of, you know, kind of fell. But, um, they wanted to restore, uh, the town in nineteen seventy, uh, because State Highway twenty that runs through it was completed. And, uh, so several, uh, business people agreed on a Western themed restoration for the town, which it already had kind of a Western vibe to begin with because they had, it was founded in the eighteen hundreds. Um, so, uh, their Chamber of Commerce, uh, teamed up again with the city. Um, so, um, and, uh, and just, there were a lot of other towns, but most of them are either based on ethnicity that was from the founders or the historical background of the town, whether they were a mining town or, uh, something like that, or based on their natural surroundings, which, um, I guess, once you say Ocean Shores, our natural surroundings are the beach and the ocean. So, all right, so now I'm going to look at coastal towns. I mean, Long Beach is our, uh, our nearest, uh, I've gone to a taller competitor for the tourist market here. Um, so Long Beach, and this is actually not necessarily the town of Long Beach, but Long Beach Peninsula. They have a joint effort between their towns, which is primarily Long Beach, Sea View, Ocean Park, and El Waco. And, um, they, well, they used to promote themselves as the world's longest beach. And if you Google, they still have a arch there and it's in prime, it's in a lot of their, uh, if you websites and that says world's longest beach. It's not true. Okay. Uh, technically, it is the world's longest continuous peninsula beach. But it is not the world's longest beach. And there's some question of it, even if it might be the longest beach in the United States. But they marketed the town for years on that theme. They marketed the town for years on that theme. Uh, now it is, it is still marketed, it's marketed under uh, if you go to their web, it's a group called this. Visit Long Beach Peninsula, which is actually a destination marketing organization uh. Uh, for those, those towns at this group effort. Between the towns, and it's actually the Long Beach Peninsular Visitors Bureau. Um, but um, as part of that, you have the Long Beach Merchants Association, the Ocean Park Chamber of Commerce. The Pacific County Tourist Bureau, all active in this. Uh, so what's Long Beach have that we don't have? Uh, they have a six and a half or eight and a half mile paved discovery trail. Uh, mostly paved, that runs from the state park, um. Okay, keep disappointment. And it's uh eight and a half miles paved up through just north of Long Beach. Uh, they have, that's promoted as well as a boardwalk, they have three state parks. Um. This is, so that that would be the closest we have to here, um, I checked some beach, some coastal towns in Oregon. Cannon Beach, uh, one of my favorite places, been there plenty of times and uh. You know, the Oregon uh beaches, they actually have a, a uh. A group, it's a Bo- Oregon Coast Visitors Association that that is actually active. Pretty much the entire Oregon coast promoting these towns, and the towns all take part in it. Uh, and uh. It's hard to compare us with the Oregon coast because the landscape is quite different, and Cannon Beach is more high-end. Um, one thing I did find, you know, I then, I I really thought was interesting on the Cannon Beach site, which I thought. Would go great here, is they have a fat bike festival every year. And we have fat bike rental place, I just bought one last week, they're all over town, and I thought that, you know. If I got anything out of that, it's like, God, that is a heck of an idea. So, something to think about, so. Anyways, after looking at all that, I went, well, what? What can we do in ocean shores? As far as, if you wanna call it a theme, okay, okay? And, I mean, so I looked at what we have here, and we have obviously the beach, and I, and I think we need to promote it as a drivable beach. We have the beach, we have the inland waters with the the canal and duck lake that we can use for kayaks and. Boating and paddle boards, we have the fat tire bike riding, uh. Fishing, crapping, clam digging. Um. The one thing that that needs to be promoted here, um, is that we are the closest beach to Seattle. Uh, we're a hundred and thirty-two miles from Seattle, two and a half hours, Long Beach is a hundred and seventy-one miles, three and a half hours. Uh, we have a golf course, there are caves, a golf. So, out of that, and now that now we're gonna be giving into, and and this is my opinion, is I think what we have to offer. Is, we have lots for families. And I think, you know, I'm not so much, you know, I don't, you wanna call it a theme, but I think it's. To me, I look at it more of a as a marketing plan, is what, okay? But, in order for this to go, or any theme or any type of marketing plan to work, there's gotta be, these are things we need to consider. First, is who are we targeting? We gotta have a target audience, okay, we're not gonna target people who are twenty to thirty years old that are looking to party and have fun, okay? We don't, I mean, I can't visit through this town at night on, at after nine o'clock on a Saturday and it's dead, so, okay? So, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna, you know, promote, you know. You know, the five-star restaurants and five-star hotels and that. What I think, um, I see is, you know, is affordable. Form affordable uh vacation or affordable weekends, and I think a family theme. Uh. But, and with a theme, some things to consider with theme also is, if you're gonna come up with a theme or a marketing plan. It's gotta have sustainability, we can't just base something on a fad. Especially if you're gonna dump a bunch of money in marketing and putting up signs and that, you don't want, you don't want something that's gonna go out of stock in ten years. Uh, and it needs to be relevant to our area. The biggest thing to make any of this work is we gotta have business involvement. This is actually, if you think about it, it's more, I'd say it's more for their benefit than the citizens here. I mean, that we, yeah, we wanna generate the tax dollars from businesses, but this is, I mean, to me, this is. We need to work with the gov, with the, with business and uh. And if you notice, there was a theme with all those towns that I mentioned before. They all have very active and strong either Chamber of Commerce or merchant associations. Okay, we have, as far as I know, I know we, they're, they're, the. Chamber of Commerce disbanded in twenty nineteen because there was issues. I did find that back in February of twenty twenty, uh, the former uh, what? Former mayor, but he wasn't mayor at the time, John Martin had led a meeting with forty-some businesses to, to try to establish. What they were calling the Ocean Shores Business Association. This meeting, it was held on February eighteenth, twenty twenty, around forty-five people attend. There was nothing else after that, but I know what happened right after February eighteen, twenty twenty was COVID. So, I'm, if anybody, I don't know if anything happened with that.
Listen, yeah, they have that.
George Lee at the Convention Center has been putting um, meetings together with businesses and hotels. Trying to figure out marketing things and getting everybody involved with like the events that we have at the Convention Center every weekend and stuff like that.
That has, yeah, that has begun again with meeting of ocean shores, business, most recently, and but it's not a full organization, it's not a. A set, the group with a name or. I, or is it?
It might have not, I know.
I think actually they might have kept the same name to start this up. Ocean Shores Business Association.
Okay, because if you Google it, nothing comes up.
Right.
So, I was wondering if it's, if it was something that's actually took, took off or or been found officially founded yet or still in the works.
Yes, there has been recently one large meeting and more are planned. I think they're planning on one month if I. Um, so sometime I would expect in June would be the second, the second meeting of this.
This is the group then that needs to be involved.
Exactly.
With the, I I guess the city needs to be involved with it to help promote this, but. The the businesses have to have, have to be, because they need to commit to it. And because they're the ones that are gonna be spending money on their businesses, if if we're gonna have a theme. And you wanna have your business part of the theme, then they need to, you know, they need, they'll need to step up. So uh, so that's, that's, the, the, it only works, all these towns that that have a successful theme or marketing plan. It's because the cit, the government and the business associated, they have a strong business association that they work in and hand. Um, you know, other things that the city needs to figure to, before we go too far, that is how much is the city willing to uh budget to promote? And implement a theme, um, because it's gonna, I mean, it takes money to make one, okay? Uh, and also, if if there is, if we can get an organized effort between the businesses and the cities. Are the business in the city, is there any potential economic grants that might be available to apply for to implement a marketing plan? Um. You know, you met, it was said, uh, one of the things was the downtown core, and that's another thing that, you know, if if there's gonna be a theme. Uh, there's definitely, there's definitely needs to be improvements on, you know, coming into town. Because uh, once you pass those ocean shore pillars, a lot of it isn't too pretty. And uh, you know, that's uh. You know, it, that's, there's other towns that have these themes, that's, you know, that there, there are a lot, you talk about codes, we're gonna have, you'd have to go through codes and. And make, you know, like, like Leavenworth, is you, even, you know, McDonald's has got, it's got. Sure, yeah, very concealer. Um, and we would have to plan events related to the themes, and I think also we would need to involve the quinotra. Because they, they uh would definitely benefit from this because it brings more business to their casino. Uh, you know, be nice to them, I I printed off a, uh. This is in uh, our ocean shores comprehensive plan. Uh, and there's a section here about marketing goals. And one of the goals is the marina and the camper there. Uh, the marina is, is basically unusable. Uh, my neighbor has a boat there, but you can't do any low tide or stuff. Um, the campground, they're losing camp sites by the day, and uh, our town really doesn't have. I I know I had an RV before I came to this town, our, we bought the house, you can't find this place to camp for. A weekend or a week or two. Um, the campgrounds are either long-term or the clubs. Um. Something else to look into, but um. Yeah, that's pretty much what I, you know, I, I think there's a lot of work that need to be involved. But I think, in the long run, it benefits everybody if, you know, we could do something.
Okay, any other thoughts on what we could market ocean shores from a theme perspective? That was, that was the challenge, and yes, an ongoing effort, but. Um. I was asked to kind of put it forth onto what kind of, how we could market ocean shores, of what theme. And so that's why it, it made the agenda today. Any thoughts?
What is the Long Beach theme?
I don't know that Long Beach has a theme except for.
The peninsula, longest beach.
World's longest beach, but they don't, if you go into their website, they don't, the visitor, visit Long, the Long Beach, it does not promote that anymore. Although there's some pictures that will have that, they, because they know it's not true, but.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, like, they have, it's just that they have. There, all the towns around that peninsula have combined together to do this marketing.
Right.
And I believe they actually, uh, they actually have a marketing company. That does, that they will go through, and that might be something to consider too. Once the city can meet with the businesses and besides, maybe, maybe it is. A a marketing company is the way to do something. Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, there's a group called OS Engaging Our Community. If you go on on Facebook, it's on there, and it promotes functions that are going on throughout ocean shores. Whether it be in the future or right now, and yeah, we probably do need a marketing company that would help us go, get us on the right direction.
Yeah, so I know it's being worked on, but they're just asking for input on what we could, what we could use. As the theme here at Ocean Shores.
I mean, most of the towns that have a theme have a long history.
Sure.
And ocean shores history starts, you know, in the sixties. And I wrote down the note here, you know, that that it was the, you know, why everybody knows the story, it was started out this Cal- California-style. Development, the one that kind of, I had to have a giggle on, and somebody commented in nineteen sixty-nine that it was the richest little city per capita. In nineteen sixty-nine, and it's like, what happened?
Okay, any other comments? Thank you for doing that, I know you did, you spent a lot of time working on the history of that and. But that's, that's what we've been asked, come up with a theme that we can use and. And they are starting to get the the business together, and that will be one of the things they'll ask them. And hopefully collectively, we'll come up with something, and you're right, maybe they'll take a con- a consultant to to help with. Putting that all together, but they're just starting out, trying to. Come up with a theme.
And yeah. And yes, Ste- Steve is right, the issue of businesses in town. It's the, it's the property owners that we need to get on to make improvements, because the old Burger King and the old um. The what, the where the old uh gas station used to be there, some of those are extreme eyesores when you come into town.
Do we know, yes, and that that has not been lost on anyone that I've talked to at this point, agreed. Okay, anything else, just please.
Well, I just think that it's a good idea, but the seventy, the population is seven thousand eight hundred fifty. You gotta get those people, not just the city and the business.
Agreed.
But the seventy-eight hundred people.
One of the recommendations that I would, would leaning to make is just, um. Let's ask, let's ask the community what they think. I don't know, but super date type, it's easy to do, we've done them before on biking and walking and and other things before that. Uh, but I think this is going to take buy-in, I agree. And uh, so I, I, I think it's important that as many people as we can get involved, the better off we'll all be. And maybe there's an answer out there, and maybe there's not. It's a step that we can take, I believe.
But I think you can convince people, you explain to them and can prove to them how much money the tourism pays in. I mean, everybody said it brings in money, but nobody ever says how much.
Yeah.
So I didn't even know what to pay them for.
Good, I mean, that's, that's a good point, and uh, there's, there's gotta be a way to put a number on. I, with, with the proper reporting, and I'm sure. I'm sure there is with things like sales tax and and other, that much, right, right? Yeah, it's not generally openly communicated, so I agree.
Yeah, because I, I don't like tourism, if you could prove to me, it's like, the city, I would go.
Sure.
And the contract, it did have the dollars that were being generated, whether it was construction or restaurants or whatever. The, those stages, you know.
And it, and to me, it doesn't matter whether you like tourism or not, this town blocks, I mean, without it, we're, we're broke. We can't just survive on property, because there's no industry here, so.
So anyway, well, thank you for uh humoring me to bring this up, discussion, and Steve, thanks for your work. Uh, the next thing on the agenda again is an, is an old. Uh, transrentals. And again, this document that app is presented, the package, is on May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Decisions were made by this body. Uh, and it has been submitted. But no action has been taken. So uh, the question that is again, like the other documents that I brought forth today. Uh, is whether or not we should submit this hard work that was done. Uh, in twenty twenty-two. To the mayor and the city council, uh, retransmit. Because nothing was done with, so I'll just read the first part of it. On May tenth, twenty twenty-two, after extensive research and months of meetings, the Ocean Shores Planning Commission. Unanimously voted to recommend additional language for section seventeen point five oh, twelve zero five five, transrentals. Of the ocean shores to this code. The commission reviewed code from other cities in Washington State. Research and discussed various options and their implications and developed the enclosed additional. Uh, recommended language. The planning commission felt that this language would better protect residents and visitors to ocean shores. And so this goes on for four pages, uh, with changes made. Um, one of the changes was prohibition of transrental with exceptions. No owner, person, or entity shall occupy, which is struck out. So, no owner, person, or entity shall use, operate, rent, or lease, nor advertise. So no owner, person, or entity shall use, operate, rent, or lease, nor advertise, offer, or negotiate to use lease or rent dwelling in the R one, R two, R three, R four, R five, R six A, R six B, R six C, R seven, R eight, and R nine zones for transrental except a dwelling holding a lawful conditional use permit for transrental on the effective date of the ordinance codified in this section and which complies with the requirements of sub, subsection C of this section, which requires all kinds of things such as business license and taxes, um, and other conditions of approval from the city. Any thoughts on whether or not I should leave some of this? Since all this hard work was done in twenty twenty-two? It's not fitting. Please, some of the short-term rentals, okay?
And then, reading so over the first part of that A through, A through D has been code for a number of years, probably twenty-five years, I don't know.
Okay.
Most of it regarding conditional uses now obsolete because I don't know if there are any left. Uh, that, it's too good for the conditions described here. E through the rest of it, E through, I guess all of E. Yeah, it's a new set we got.
The business license.
Yeah. And I think again, we're getting into things that are less useful in the zoning code. These are useful things, but they belong in the zoning code. They belong in the rest of municipal code, other business licenses, all of that stuff, much of which is already called for here. So to put, to put this in the zoning code, I think is a mistake. Put rest of municipal code fine. Okay? Because it's, it's actually too specific and stuff that's really hard to change because well, some of it here is a little unworkable, like alternate property represented.
Hmm, hmm.
It actually calls for somebody who lives here with a short-term rental to have three of themselves, local rental lot with somebody else to take over if you're in, whatever, I don't know.
Yes.
And I think that's a little, little much, a little tough. And with respect to parking, particularly with, uh, some of the apartment buildings around it that are short-term rentals, like in Ocean City, Nautilus, uh, I don't know how you enforce it. Because they have been designed apparently, I don't know how many units they've been allowed right now, but this may ask for an additional one, so I, I don't know how you enforce it. But other than, I mean, it's all fine. Business license is already required. They, they do, the share that is, they have to pay and everything else, and that's probably shouldn't be in the zoning code. But other than that, taking out zoning code suggests that they work at their own. This, this came from another municipality, believe it.
Okay. I wasn't on the planning commission at times. Um, I just found that, uh, this had not been acted upon with the hard work that.
I don't know, I think we should have got. It's a wrong one.
Okay. So what I'm hearing, um, is that we need to work more on this before retransmitting this a little bit. Okay, all right. Um, the other thing is there are restrictions currently in the code to where transrentals can be had.
Right.
For lack of better wording, um, what's the, what's the mood of just allowing transrentals anywhere in Ocean Shore?
Oh, I'm getting under the table.
Now, Marshall, Marshall looking at you for a reason. Yeah, so just hypothetically, what's, what's the chance of doing that? You know, I'm getting some, some mass from a bar. Um, so how difficult would that be just to say, okay? If, why not have transrentals in all zone?
So in, in my thirty-one-year tenure with the city, this has come to a public vote twice and crashed and burned significantly. Uh, the second instance was a fairly limited attempt at uh, cornering the transient rental market, you know, closer to the ocean, farther south, and not approaching as much into the, uh, the, uh, the, the bulk body of the residential districts. And even that, um, I, I believe failed miserably. So there doesn't seem to be an appetite to have that in the resident, uh, at all. But, um, the one thing that I was kind of hoping Steve would touch on when he was talking about all of these other beach communities and stuff like that is their accommodation. Um, like Steve, I've spent quite a bit of time on the Oregon coast. And, uh, you go down to Seaside or Cannon Beach or, or one of those places, you can almost pick the block that you want to stay in, and there would be a transient rental there. Um, but the thing that I, that I remembered distinctly is there was a really robust level of enforcement in that the contracts were written when you signed up. If you are a father to a neighbor, you are out, no questions asked, no refunds given, and, um, and they held the owner's feet to the fire. And, and I can tell you that, um, our local guy, Rick Wyndham, who manages some of the transient rentals in town, he is also very strict in how he manages his vacation rentals, especially the ones that are close to the residential zones. Um, because it's a privilege for those folks to have that. So at some point in Ocean Shores, they're probably going to have to entertain that. I think it's an economic engine that could bring a lot of money to Ocean Shores. And if we're going to try to come up with a theme and have large festivals and stuff like that, um, I don't know if our motel industry, um, can support those levels. Um, part of our zoning, uh, reclassification that's been going on here is entertaining the idea of, of maybe opening up some urban transient rental down in the, uh, what was to be the B-three zone of Ocean Shores, where, where we suspect it's going on anyway. Um, there was another point that I wanted to make, um, regarding that, and it has escaped me at this point, but.
Won't be bad.
Yeah, well, that's, that's one of the areas, but it was, it was not all multifamily zones because we have some, uh, that are out deeper into the residential zones that I don't think there was any appetite at all. Um, you know, other than that B-three zone in the south end of Ocean Shores.
So what you're telling me has failed a couple of times because not in my neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Oh.
Yeah. And, and even today, I don't feel like there's a, a large appetite, uh, based on the research. Cause we touched on this in the last planning commission, and there's not a large appetite within the community uh, to open up transient rentals in, other than the places. Oh, here was my other point. One of the things that has occurred, because we are not allowing transient rentals in other places, is I have guys with industrial-type businesses that need to store pipe and gravel and equipment and everything else that have nowhere to do that now because they're competing with the only place in town where you can sign transient rental, and that's our B-one and B-two businesses. Um, in the last four or five years, um, as the transient rental market has increased, um, basically all of the properties that have sold in the south end of Ocean Shores that were zoned for commercial-type interests, uh, you know, we had, you know, storage yards and, and, uh, businesses and, and things like that of an industrial, less attractive nature. Now we've got neighborhoods down there that have evolved into transient rentals, and that has hurt our business districts significantly. So that's, that's my, my experience, uh, over my tenure.
Appreciate it. Any other comments?
Yeah, uh, as far as residential areas, I mean, I want to see transient rentals. I'm assuming based on what you just said, that transient rentals are permitted in B-one, two, and three?
But we don't have a designated B-three zone right now. That zone was, was, I think, historically was intended to be the large condominiums that wrap down by the jetty and, and door from the, basically from the wastewater treatment plant wrapping around maybe one or both sides of the street. It wasn't clearly defined, um, in the, in the cop plan. But, uh, that, that's the only place that, um, the previous planning commission and some discussions in, in this current planning commission have entertained expanding the transient rentals was in that area that was to be designated as B-three.
I mean, I can see, I can see reasoning to come up with areas to allow transient rentals, like Marshall said, you know, a lot, you go on, you know, Oregon coast and you see them all, but most of them are right in town by the business districts and not really, they're not, I wouldn't really consider them residential areas per se, because I don't think there's a lot of full-time residents where you see a lot of them. Cause you see, you usually see a red line up and, you know, uh, whereas here we have, you know, a specific business district here, up here. And then pretty much the center of our peninsula is all residential. And I think we need to preserve that for, um, for the residents. Um, I know, I, I winter in Arizona and I know they've had, uh, a lot of issues with transient rentals, especially in Scottsdale and other, and Mesa and that, where, you know, the people rent it for a weekend or so, and this, it's, you know, big, they'll rent these big, well, we don't have these here, they'll rent these big mansions in Scottsdale or something. And they have a big, huge party in the police and nerve ball and, you know, or even smaller. You know, you got twenty-somethings rent them and get away from their parents for the week, for, for the weekend and have a big party. And, uh, I think our residential areas need to stay that way, but there should be places for them. And if we can come up with areas that are, you know, light on permanent residents who, you know, uh, maybe we should consider. Well, we do have areas where transrentals are. But that, I mean, and are they being occupied? You know, we talked about the hotel occupancy. Somebody at one of the, uh, city council meetings, there's, I can't remember her name, but she, she runs the Canterbury.
Shandary.
Yeah. She said something about last year that their occupancies were fifty-three percent that less than the year before. I thought that was the number she threw out, which I thought was astounding. And she said that most people that Google Ocean Shores and then trying to go find, they end up in Long Beach. Okay? So apparently there's hotel rooms here. So is there even a need for tran, that much of a need for transient rentals if we have that kind of vacancies at our, at our hotels?
So I will hold off on sending this, uh, document from May tenth, twenty twenty-two forward. And we'll work on it a little bit more. Um, so, uh, we'll move on the agenda now. Uh, planning commission, uh, member report. Lauren, any report?
No.
She had a great vacation. Good. Um, Tom, any, uh, report?
No.
Okay. Steve, any further report?
Not further, no.
Okay, I'd like to open up a public comment.
Okay, back to the transit, yeah.
And I don't, this is a part of the before Jeff Daniel transit accident.
Yes.
We submitted to council, uh, transient rental from Rainview Drive on Ocean Shore Boulevard South. And those meetings we had when we were discussing it were terrible. The people were just nasty. They don't want, but we finally got it down where we thought we had a good, it, it provided some more. It went to council. I was one of the presenters of it. And.
So that was never inherited?
No.
That, that proposal?
We gave it to them, talked to them. If you wanted, so God, I could send it to you.
Maybe one.
But it's a, just a, not a good subject.
Okay, super. Any other comments? Any public comments from a bar, please? Yes, Steve?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, I have a couple of comments. Uh, getting back to food trucks. Um, in the B zones, one, two, three, uh, food trucks are not listed as a permitted use. That's, you know, not a statement that should be, uh, news to anybody, and why isn't it in, in there, uh, as a permitted use? So you, you've got a conflict in your transient, your food truck, uh, code versus your zoning. Uh, another comment I have is what is your justification or the city's justification for restricting the forty percent rule to residential, uh, properties only? That appears, in my opinion, to be discriminatory, uh, and favoring commercial sites. And in fact, the twenty nineteen Western Washington Stormwater Manual makes no distinction between residential and commercial properties. I'm not going to get into the requirements, but one of the flow charts that determines which one of the minimum requirements under that manual should be applied to a particular development uses a thirty percent, thirty-five percent rule, uh, as one of the first questions to ask. So in the algorithm, you can answer that question, is, are thirty-five percent of the property already impervious? So I think you need to coordinate between state law and your ordinances, which in some cases can be more restrictive. But in other cases, like in tonight's council meeting regarding section R three twenty-two, which was actually rescinded under the state building code in twenty sixteen. You need to make sure that you're staying within state law. You can be more restrictive, but you can't, you have to be at least apply the rule according to what the state, uh, is, requires. My third comment has to do with section seventeen fifty-two, ten D, and that six fifty minimum square footage requirement for your buildings. And I think if you look at the last year's legislation that was passed, uh, and I could be wrong about this, but I think, um, it would behoove you to look into it that it doesn't allow a jurisdiction to apply minimum square footage standards in support of higher-density housing. So I think you guys got a problem there. Now, regard, regarding ocean pores and the information that was submitted on your, uh, agenda, those are not construction drawings, folks. Those are called cut sheets. They're not site-specific. And as you may notice, they haven't been signed by a professional engineer. So those are for information only, and they should not be specifically applied to ocean pores. And finally, the infamous pyramid zoning. When are you guys going to get serious about rescinding that rule? All your problems that you're talking about today are based on pyramid zoning. All you have to do is get rid of pyramid zoning, and you're going to get a lot of your problems solved. So those are my suggestions, and, uh, I'm happy to discuss it with you offline if you should desire.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments.
Thank you so much. Okay. Any other public comment? Yes, Susan?
Thank you. Just that I'm looking forward to getting a response to the email that I sent to you, Mark, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, our next meeting will be on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, P P M. Our secretary for the next meeting will be Commissioner Barr. Will I have a, uh, motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Like, all in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned at three twenty.